September 5, 2017, meeting of Anarond County Councils now in session. Please stand for invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Walker, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bow our heads. Lord and heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to come together this evening and do the work of the people here in Anarond County. Bless our efforts and our time, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to take this golden opportunity and introduce myself. My name is John Grasso, on behalf of myself and staff and the entire council, but most of all, on behalf of the people of Anarond County, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting and like always sincerely hope and trust that you find it very informative and probably a little bit amusing at that point. And with that being said, Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject, not on the printed agenda? We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and please state your name and address. So I'm going to call off five names. And like you, take the front seats over here. We have Ms. Amelie Brandonberg, we got Mr. Peter Kane, looks like Nevin Young, Ms. Brenda Witro, and this is an interesting one, Brooks Shandermizer. And I apologize if I said that wrong, it was done with love. There you go. Please, everybody, we want to keep it to two minutes because we want to allow everybody a chance to speak, and once the two minutes goes off, you hear that dong, your mic will get cut, and I'll ask for the next person. So two minutes, please. Ms. Brianne Berg, you're the first one.
Great, thank you. As part of County Executive Schu's effort to combat the heroin epidemic in our county, I wanted to update the council and county residents on the efforts being made by Anarond County Public Schools, Anarond Community College, and Anarond County Public Libraries. Over the last several years, Anarond County Public Schools has taken a proactive approach to the issue of drug use and addiction. They provided instruction to middle and high school students related to opioids and heroin and are adding information about fentanyl this year. At the elementary level, councilors have and will deliver age-appropriate lessons that focus on healthy decision-making and the safe use of medication. All school health rooms are stocked with a supply of naloxone. All school nurses and health assistants have been trained by the Anarond County Department of Health on the use and administration of Narcan. Our Office of Constituent Services presented "Not My Child" in all 12 feeder systems last year and will continue the series again this year. At Anarond Community College, the Substance Abuse Education Office offers a wide variety of multimedia and interactive heroin and opioid prevention programs, such as Hoops for Hope, Sheer Madness, Chasing the Dragon, and again, Not My Child. This office was authorized to conduct educational training programs under the overdose response program by the Maryland Department of Health. Anarond Community College is in the process of developing an opioid prevention and education video to be shown at new student orientation, campus events, and to boost their online and virtual heroin and opioid prevention education efforts. All health science programs have infused learning about opioid addiction into their curriculum. Public safety team members and police officers are all trained to dispense Narcan, and some carry it with them while others have access to it within their AED stations. The college nurse's office has Narcan as well. Anarond County Public Libraries has been working with the Anarond County Department of Health to provide opioid overdose training to library staff starting in early August. This training is on how to recognize, prevent, and respond to an overdose, including administering Narcan. So far, 50 library staff members, including at least two in every branch, have volunteered to get this training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next person, and thanks for coming out too tonight, we always appreciate. Mr. Peter Kane, you're on. Thanks for coming out tonight, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'd like to speak about Michael Peruka, the councilman sitting before you, who has a long association with a hate group called the League of the South. Recently, the group's militia units could be seen marching in Charlottesville with their white crosses alongside Nazi flags. Peruka was for many years a member of this group. A few months before coming councilman, he conveniently resigned from its own board of directors. The group advocates Southern secession. Regarding President Lincoln, the League states, "Join us to celebrate the great accomplishment of John Wilkes Booth. He knew a man who needed killing when he saw him." The elected councilman celebrates the assassination of Abraham Lincoln. Meanwhile, in our county, racial hatred abounds. Lieutenant Collins was murdered by a man from Zavarna Park who was a member of the Alt-Rich Nation. Two students from Crofton Middle School were charged with hanging a noose on a lamppost. At this meeting, the public is given an opportunity to speak before the council. The Constitution of our great country gives us the right to criticize elected leaders without fear of retribution, and we have chosen to speak about Mr. Peruka. In the past, when speaking about Peruka at these meetings, council chair John Grasso has threatened us with removal or arrest. It should be obvious to elected officials that the suppression of free speech in this room stands in opposition to a fair and healthy democracy. I believe the fact that John Grasso does not understand this issue makes him unfit for the office he holds. Speaking to this subject in June, I was shut down while John Grasso allowed the pastor of this very same hate group to speak. Why would John Grasso deny our right to free speech to protect Mr. Peruka from his ugly past?
Thank you for coming out, sir, appreciate it. Next person, let's see, we have Nevin Young, is it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for coming to see us tonight.
And the honorable members of the council. My name is Nevin Young, I'm a lawyer from Annapolis. I'm also a candidate for mayor in Annapolis. I would like to generally speak in support of Mr. Kane's remarks tonight. However, my concern is not so much with the particulars of any particular council members' associations, but with the chair's past reading of this council's rules. My understanding is that speech may be suppressed by this council generally for three reasons. That is, if remarks are defamatory, are profane, or have to do with remarks of a personal nature about a council member. I agree with the ACLU that remarks having to do with personal factors about a council member are probably, it is probably unconstitutional to prevent someone from speaking about those issues. I saw nothing defamatory or profane in the remarks that were offered back in June by either of the speakers who would have proffered their testimony about the League of the South. Part of the value of that open debate and discussion is, since that time, and I know the chairman at the time flatly stated that the League of the South is not a hate group or rejected the contention that it is, since that time, we saw in Charlottesville, the flags of the League of the South intertwined with those of the KKK and of the American Nazi Party in Charlottesville. And so, I would urge every member of the council to, if you have made any statements in the past, that the League of the South is not a hate group, to retract those remarks or correct them in light of what has been learned since that time. The League of the South, on its own website, purports to be a group dedicated to the preservation of Anglo-Celtic heritage. Now, I am the perfect target for that sort of marketing, except that I utterly reject that sort of racism, and I know it when I see it. And so, that will end my time.
Hey, thanks for coming out, Ms. Young, appreciate that. Okay. Folks, please, you welcome to clap, please do it after everybody speaks, and let's do a real good clap, okay? All right, so next person we have, let's see, Ms. Brenda Witro, if I'm saying it right? Winrode?
Winrode, correct.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am, we can, go, you get your two minutes.
I too would like to speak about Michael Peruka's involvement in the League of the South. It's my understanding that the League of the South is a white supremacy group dedicated to Southern secession and the formation of a Southern government led by and four white Christians. Mr. Peruka was a member of the League for many years and in fact, served on League's Board Directors. Just as Trump's election has signaled white supremacists that they have, two white supremacists, that they have an ally in the White House, Peruka's election has signaled white supremacists in our county that they have an ally with the power to make law in our county. His intention might never have been to promote racism, but the impact of complicity with a racist organization is toxic. We need to set the record straight and show that our county stands against hate and white supremacy. I believe it is best for our county, Mr. Peruka, if you at this time submit your resignation. If we do not join together to demand his resignation, we risk normalizing an ideology promulgated by Peruka and the League of the South, that if left unchecked, history has shown can only lead to the subjugation, if not extermination, of millions of people based on their race, religion, sexuality, gender identity, country of origin, or immigration status. I ask that all county council members join me in demanding his resignation.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am, we appreciate you for all the time. Okay, next person, let me see if I get this last name right. Mr. Shandermizer? Hot dog, there you go. Thanks for coming out, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Brooks Shandermeyer. I'm here today to talk about the recent repeal of DACA, and I'm urging the members of the county council to do what you can to protect Anarond County's Dreamers. These were people brought to our country as young children. They speak English well, they are just as American as you or I, they work hard, they pay taxes, they're here to open businesses and be part of the American dream. Allowing the federal government to simply remove these members of our community will cost us a lot of money in administrative fees and lost revenues from people who are here to work hard and pay taxes. So I urge all of you to do what you can to protect them, including withdraw from the 287-G program. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming out. Okay, we got our next three people. It looks like, all right, it looks like Ms. Judy Mollin, is it? Am I saying it right? Mollin? Farman, is it? Sorry if, come on down. Jasmine Jamison, come on down.
Jasmine.
Jasmine, how are you doing today, ma'am? And next person, we have, looks like Mr. William Power, is it?
Rower.
Rower, sorry about that, sir. Come on down. Okay, so, Ms. Judy Farman, I guess she's not here? Okay, Ms. Jamison, you're on, two minutes, please.
I also would like to speak about Michael Peruka and the League of the South. Mr. Peruka was a member of the League, an organization dedicated to creating an independent Southern nation governed by and for white Christians. In 2002, Michael Hill, the founder and president of the League, said, in quote, "In the Southern States, we're going to close every mosque, we're going to send every Muslim out of here", end quote, and I'm a Muslim. Two years later, Hill said, quote, "For at least the past 400 years, Western Christian, that is European-American civilization alone, has enjoyed the fruits of order, liberty, and abundant prosperity. Elsewhere in the world, despotism, sloth, and poverty have been the order of the day", end quote. In 2014, Mr. Peruka emailed Hill noting, "I am grateful for our friendship and for the work of the League of the South. Given Hill and Peruka's friendship, I cannot understand why this June, Mr. Peruka appeared shocked by recent racist statements made by Hill when Hill has been issuing racist statements for decades. They are on the internet for everyone to see. Why didn't Mr. Peruka see these and immediately reject Hill and the League of the South? For too long, Mr. Peruka's presence on the county council has sent a message that white supremacists are welcome in this county. It is time for Mr. Peruka to resign in recognition of the damage he has done to the moral character of this county. If County Executive Schu is sincere in his anti-racism initiative, he will join me in demanding Mr. Peruka's resignation. Two questions. Do you, Mr. Peruka, believe the South was right to secede from the Union? Two, are you glad the South lost the Civil War? That's it.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you coming out. Okay, let's see, next person, looks like Mr. William, I'm saying again, Rower, is it?
Rower.
Row.
Row.
Thanks for coming out, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all, thank you, county council. I'm here to actually speak about humanity in our county, and in particular, as a reminder that this is election time and that these proceedings are telecast and that there are, though there are people here who are speaking out about this particular issue, there are countless hundreds more watching and paying attention, who are voters and who are constituents of this here council, just as a reminder. I'd also like to speak about Michael Peruka and the League of the South, which is incredibly personal and dear to me as a lifelong county resident, having lived in California for a little while. I was raised in Annapolis and now live in Anarond County as well. At the June 19 county council meeting, Mr. Peruka read a statement about his membership in the League. He said, quote, "I believed the group to be integrated and non-discriminatory without regard to race or with regard to race." Now, the League of the South has a photo gallery, and in this website, filled with photos of rallies and protests, which is one good thing about the internet, there's an electronic trail for most things. Every single person in all of these photos is white. So can Mr. Peruka explain why that is given? And he stated also that he believed the League to be integrated and non-discriminatory. In July of 2012, Mr. Peruka gave a speech at the League's National Conference, which all of us know who work for anyone when we attend national conferences, we are by proxy representing a group of people or we have a membership in that larger conference. He ended by asking the audience to stand for the National Anthem. He then led them in singing Dixie. And as an African-American, descendant of slaves, that is an extremely derogatory and hurtful thing. I'm almost finished.
I appreciate your two minutes.
Hunter Wallace was also at that 2012-
May I have, please, sir, two minutes? Is there any item, any councilman who would like to place on the agenda? And I think we have Mr. Trumbauer has a statement that he would like to say?
He wrote, I think-
Mr. Trumbauer?
Yeah, I've been to a lot of council meetings and I can-
To, sir, excuse me, please. Okay, Mr. Trumbauer, we have a, we have, we have a two-minute rule, sir. Everybody gets two minutes.
Oh, you're cutting their mic off after two-
Two minutes when the buzzer gets shut off, sir. Mr. Trumbauer, do you want to say anything?
Well, Mr. Chairman, before I do that, some other members of the audience have risen, I think they want to speak as well.
Okay.
I don't know if you-
Anybody else would like to come up and address the council on open mic? Please feel free to come down. Once again, two minutes when the buzzer goes off, we call it off at that point.
I've never been to a council meeting where they cut the mic off. I've never in my life, in Los Angeles, California-
Okay, I know, let's see, Mr. Shea, and you can start off with you, and sir, I don't have your name, so we'll get to you, and we'll just go this way. Mr. Shea, name and address, please.
Yes, sir.
Two minutes.
Name's his name.
Go ahead, Mr. Shea, you're on.
Make sure you say what he wants to hear, otherwise you're going to be cut off.
Thank you, sir.
Minute the buzzer goes-
Appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr. Shea.
I'd like to get, Mike Shea, Red Top Farm, Shadyside. I'd like to give an update on the cell tower issue in the open period that we had at the last county council meeting, where we had five compelling people from our diverse community speak in opposition for different reasons on the cell tower. And I'd like to bring you up to speed as to what's happened since then. We have been to the Board of Education with lots of compelling testimony, lots of science, lots of emails, lots of phone calls. But what I really want to share with you is, we had a public meeting in the community, and there's really been a problem with transparency and process. Basically, the public meeting was after the school board had already voted to target Shadyside Elementary. But there was between 100 and 125 citizens there, 99%. It was supposed to be an informational meeting, 99% of the people in the community really didn't want it. The Capitol has come out against it. Milestone since then has pulled out of Prince George's County where they were run out, depending on who you listen to on that. But at that public meeting, I made the allegation that really, it is pay-for-play, and that Jerry Walker had taken $5,500 of Milestone money. And at that meeting, he actually called the police to intervene and come. And I would like to roll from that, that it really has been special interest over private interest. I work on a lot of community issues, the haunted house was special interest over public interest. I've been working on an issue for 11 years to save some very important lands down in Shadyside. And I can tell you, most people in this room, most people in the community, believe there's a two-track permitting process.
Okay, Mr. Shea. Next person, we'll go right to you, please. Name and address, please, and thanks for coming out tonight.
Address?
Please. Name and address, please.
My name's Tori Snow.
Address, sir?
He needs his microphone.
Oh, we're sorry about that, my bad. Go ahead, sir.
I would not like to share my address publicly, please.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, sir, two minutes.
My name is Tori Snow, and I would like to call to the attention of all present, that it is very discouraging to me that there are no more than five people of color in this council. This effort to disparage the name Michael Peruka has been broadcast and circulated on social media, passed around, and as you can see, the people that are in attendance are not reflective of the people that are supposedly being defended against. The fact of the matter is that many of us see this effort and this organization exactly for what it is. It is a political maneuver that has nothing to do with serving our communities, and I am very concerned that we are expending valuable resources, wasting time discussing matters that do not matter. Our communities are being plagued with crime. We have gangs that are taking over in our communities. The police are struggling to keep up against crime. They are, we're trying to get decent schools, we're trying to get jobs to employ people, and the only thing we can talk about is someone's membership in an old club. This is very frustrating to me and many other black Americans in this community, so I call upon all the organizers here to take the effort that you are spending into disparaging a man whose actions and activities have no bearing on what's happening in this county, and that you would divert them to improving and making our communities over in Severn and Millersville and many other places, Mead Village, Pioneer City, please commit that effort into supporting our local law enforcement to make our communities safer, so that our children can enjoy safer environments. Please commit that energy into improving our school infrastructure and not prioritizing the rights and the, in the interest of the teachers' unions and all these things. We want a balanced approach to all of that. Please get behind supporting our local black communities and focus on the things that we want dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Okay, madam, name and address, please, your two minutes.
My last name is Shin, my first name is S-A-N-G-O-K, you'll never pronounce it. Mr. Grasso, I've been here a couple times.
Thanks for coming to see us again.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my sadness with this county council. Race is an issue here, it's a, race is an issue that plays into economics, how finances are managed in this community. The issue of Mr. Peruka, Mr. Peruka, you should not be on that county council, okay? I don't know what sort of grandfather you are, maybe you're wonderful, but you do not belong on that county council. These issues of race, when nooses show up at my local junior high school, is a problem. As a county, whether it's Mr. Schu or this council, needs to come out with very robust policies and statements against this. Some of the 287-G issues, we've come to this table over and over again. If you are going to rip apart this country implementing that sort of program, Anarond County is the perfect way to do it. Pull back on it. Urge Mr. Schu to pull back on it. This is a divisive issue, and I just came from looking at all these news reports on the kids under DACA. You're going to round them up in Anarond County facilities and say, hey, it's not our fault, we're just in a contract with ICE? No, we're complicit. Do not round up those kids that are under DACA. Pull out of the 287-G program and start healing this county again, because this isn't working. This council isn't doing what we elected you guys to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out again, ma'am. Ma'am, how are you doing this evening? First name and last name, please, and address. Two minutes, please.
Karen Madison, Edgewater, Maryland. I did not prepare anything, so I'm just winging it here. I think our country has a real ugly tide going across it right now, which is really disturbing to a lot of people and really alarming to a lot of people, and it's scary. My grandparents were immigrants, my aunt and uncle were born in Poland and brought over here, so I guess you would say they're Dreamers. I grew up with understanding who Hitler was, but not understanding that it was anything that would ever walk across my path in my life, ever. And here I am, watching things that I didn't think would happen. And I remember as a child saying, "How did that happen, Mom? How did that happen?" Well, it happened because people of conscience didn't do anything, because people of conscience didn't stand up and say this is wrong, because it was too politically uncomfortable for them to do it. And I'm begging all of you, there is a, this is bad, what's going on. And you may not think it's bad, sir, and you may think this is not something we should be working on, but this is an insidious disease that can filter through to every part of our culture and society. And I am really asking all of you to do what is right. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you coming out. Okay, moving forward, is there any council member who'd like to place on the agenda? Mr. Trumbauer has a statement to make. Mr. Trumbauer, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I'm sure you remember, a few meetings ago, we did have some folks come and talk about their proposed cell tower on elementary school. I had emailed all of you and said I was looking at potentially a resolution or something. I've decided not to pursue that, but I did want to make you aware that I wrote a letter to the Board of Ed explaining my opposition to having cell towers constructed on elementary school property. And really, the reasoning is because those, those schools are very small, there's not a lot of real estate on them. I think to the extent that there's any ability to support public infrastructure, that should be on public infrastructure that's going to benefit the students or, you know, serve some other public good, you know, maybe rooftop solar or something like that. But really, I just wanted to make you aware of that and follow up, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you individually about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I'm going to take my, my little opportunity to say that the fountain project is coming, winding down in my district and District 1 and 2, and all the people that have helped me with the project, air raid and the waterways, another great success. However, I am still putting fountains out, so if you're watching this and you're worried that you're not getting a fountain, don't you worry, I'll be ringing your doorbell and put one out there. Okay, with that being said, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I heard it. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 17, 2000, July 17 and August 14, 2017.
The meetings were called to order by the chairman, John Grasso, and opened with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 17 and August 14, 2017?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes of July 17 and August 14, 2017 stands approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 7517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Wholesale Bakeries. Bill number 7617, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems. Bill number 7717, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, First Amendment to Agreement, Housing Commission of Anarond County.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 3617, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Fiscal Year 2017, Local Solicitation. Resolution number 3717, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Non-Buildable County-Owned Property on Elizabeth Avenue in Baltimore, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution number 3817, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Non-Buildable County-Owned Property near Holly Berry Road in Zavarna Park, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution number 3917, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Non-Buildable County-Owned Property near Island View Drive in Annapolis, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution number 4017, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Non-Buildable County-Owned Property on Old Riverside Road in Brooklyn Park, Baltimore, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution number 4117, Resolution Appointing Members of the Salary Standard Commission.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolution numbers 4117 out of order?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4117 is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6617.
Bill number 6617, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Transfer of Funds.
Oh, here we go. We got all our little happy friends coming down. Always glad to see you guys. Hadn't seen you for a month.[1749.97]
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4117 is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6617.
Bill number 6617, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, transfer of funds.
Oh, here we go. We got all our little happy friends coming down. Always glad to see you guys. Haven't seen you for a month. Okay, Administration, you're on. Mr. Marzick, good to see you again, too.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office, with me at the table, Matt Stansky, Alex Shiknovich from Anarondale County Public Schools, Jessica Leish in the budget office, and Nancy Duden from the Office of Law. As you remember, during the budget, we had made a commitment to transfer funds from the contingency count, the CAO, to the local education fund, the Board of Ed. This is a supplementary appropriation to the board's current expense budget for the current fiscal year. This bill appropriates $3,085,000 of additional operating budget funds to the board to provide for compensation, enhancements, and one-time funds in support of the secretaries and assistance association of Anarondale County Labor Agreement. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Any question for the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but a statement. Very pleased to see this come together. This is kind of the dotting of the i's and crossing of the t's of all that work we did and I'm glad it worked out favorably. So thank you to the board and to the administration.
Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Chairman, just before this vote, as far as disclosure, my spouse has employed the school system. I always announce that before the vote, so, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much. We're gonna open up the public hearing on 6617. If anybody wants to chime in, please feel free to go behind that mic over there. Two minutes, we shut the buzzer off. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're gonna close the public hearing on 6617. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6617.
Bill number 6617, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, transfer of funds.
Ain't discussion. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 6617.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 6617 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 6717.
Bill 6717, an ordinance concerning zoning and construction and property maintenance code supplement, construction code administrative provisions, agritourism permits, agricultural buildings.
Okay. This ought to be interesting. And we have the Administration. Mr. Marzick, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office, with me at the table, Lisa Barge from Economic Development Corporation, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning. As the council will remember well, we introduced bill 6717 after the council previously voted down the agritourism bill. We had promised we would introduce a bill immediately after that. Bill failed and this is that bill before you. This bill is identical to the bill that was before the council, before Mr. Walker's amendment was adopted. We would ask you to support this bill. In addition, I wanted to add that the county executive will be creating or issuing an executive order to create a citizens committee on agritourism and agriculture to advise the planning and zoning officer, as well as the county executive, on issues related to agritourism, trying to get more community input on this. We've met with several folks in the interim since the last hearing on this bill and we hope this commission will provide a transparent process for more community input on these issues, as you all have heard some concerns and we have heard his concerns as well. So we'd be happy to answer questions if the council has, but we ask you to support this bill tonight.
Anybody have questions?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Marzick, thank you and thank you for bringing up the advisory council or committee, I forget exactly what we're calling it, but if my colleagues are like me, they've gotten a number of emails and calls about some specific aspects of, you know, the new clean bill. And, you know, I'm just looking for you to make a commitment that you will include those voices on the advisory council because it's not official and we haven't seen who's gonna be on it. I think a public assurance would be helpful if you're able to do that.
Yes, absolutely. We are trying to finalize the executive order now. Hopefully that this bill will pass and we can issue it this week, once the bill is signed. And we will have community leaders in there. We have representatives of the agriculture industry, representatives of tourism industry, and staff from the relevant agencies, but we are looking to have a wide breadth of community input to try to address these issues.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I'm not trying to be prescriptive, but you might want to look at including someone, not necessarily from Growth Action Network, but someone in that realm of folks that have been involved in commenting on this.
That's our intent.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
And that panel will include, it consists of folks throughout the entirety of the county because I know in District 1 we have a couple of agro-tourism-like activities and I'm sure that they would want some feedback or input as well into that panel.
We will try, we will try to include diversity as far as the geography is concerned as well.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we don't have the appointments or the folks in there. If you have people in mind, please feel free to email me or let me know.
I will email you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We're gonna open up the public hearing on 6717. We got a few names here, so once again, if I butchered your name, it's done out of love?
67.
6717. I thought that's what I said, but I'll say it again. Okay, so to start off, we got, looks like Mr. Paul Christensen and it looks like, I'm not sure if it's James or Jamie Mule, is it?
James.
James, thanks for coming out to see us. And we have Larry Almo, eh, bazzano, kissa di ci. And Ms. Kathy Grant, come on down, please. Two minutes. Soon as you hear that buzzer, we cut your mic. We'll start off with Mr. Paul Christensen. You're on. Two minutes, name and address, please.
My name is Paul Christensen. I live at 231 Hidden Valley Road in Tracy's Landing. I want to start by saying that, as you all know, this is a huge bill. It affects zoning on 70 square miles of land in the county. It affects more than 10,000 residences and it's big. You cannot look at it just casually. It has a lot of flaws. You've heard about, a lot about that in the past. Tonight, I'm gonna focus on just one of those, just to keep our focus sharp in this two minutes. I'm gonna focus on something where a change of a single word can have a fairly large impact on this bill and I think we should make that change. I want to point your attention to the first paragraph of the bill. It says, "The benefits of the bill apply to parcels classified as agricultural for tax purposes or covered by a soil conservation plan." Now, every real farm has a soil conservation plan, but unfarmed parcels typically do not. Let's look at some of the data. The county provides parcel information database for all the parcels in the county. If you go through that, you find that there are 47,000 parcels that are tagged agricultural. On the other hand, the U.S. Department of Agriculture has conducted a census in 2012 that indicated that there are only 28,000 acres of farmed land in the county. That's a big discrepancy, 19,000 acres. What's going on here? The difference between these two numbers suggests that there are 20, about 20,000 square, 20,000 acres of land or 30 square miles in the county that are unfarmed, but that are eligible for treatment under this bill. Now, the benefits of that, of bringing those things in, won't help farmers, but they will scale up opportunities for abuse and for unintended consequences. We need to change that one word or...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person we have, it's Mr. James Mule, is it? Saying it right?
That's right.
Two minutes, please.
With all the controversies swirling around the issue of agritourism, it would be easy to miss the fact that bill 6717 would also dramatically change zoning rights for facilities used to process agricultural commodities. These are the facilities that turn fruit into cider, grapes into wine, milk into cheese, livestock packaged meats. Today, Anarondale County's zoning code allows farms, farmers to process what they grow on their farm. Under the Schu administration's bill, anyone could process farm products anywhere in the county. To qualify, all an individual would have to do is to grow a single ingredient on their property. Throw some trives in the mix and you'd be ready to go. Is this smart policy? Why should Anarondale County allow processing in every residential district when at least 11 other Maryland counties restrict these types of activities to large rural lots and commercial areas? Why should Anarondale County have zoning conditions for wineries and breweries but nothing else? If this provision gets enacted, Anarondale County will have the distinction of having some of the weakest standards in the state. Citizens deserve safeguards on par with those in other counties, especially considering the waste streams and traffic issues that can stem from these operations. Getting the best law will require administration's proposal and craft, to craft a policy that's right for Anarondale County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Almo, please name an address and two minutes, please.
My name is Larry Almo and I represent a family farm in Annapolis. We operate a small five-acre farm in an RLD area. The bill is very important to us since it provides the platform from which we can diversify our farm offerings and look for improved financial stability and we believe both these are in accordance with the stated objectives of Governor Hogan. We spent an extremely amount of time and effort and financial resources to gain the necessary approvals from Health Department and other agencies to be able to diversify what our product offerings are and to grow our business, including not only directly farm through farmers' markets, but also expanding out into other areas such as restaurants and wholesalers. We believe the passage of this bill will provide the needed changes to enable the opportunities for primary farmers, such as us, to diversify their offerings and increase their financial conditions by using the benefits evaluated when integrating the products of one or more farmers with those of another. We further believe that all serious primary stakeholders have had sufficient time to respond to the former version of this bill, so I trust we can look forward to seeing this bill voted on and without the introduction of any other amendments or attempts to derail tonight's approval. We respectfully request your continued support for the passage of this bill and look for the opportunities for further farming operations such as ours. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, we have Ms. Kathy Grant. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
My name is Kathy Grant. I live at 404 Arundel Road in Fairheaven. Since this bill was reintroduced in July, farmers and citizens have been collaborating on ways to make it better. Instead of pausing to consider those ideas, the administration and council are rushing to pass this bill without answering some serious questions. For example, as noted by Mr. Mule, there's the question of why Anarondale should have the weakest standards in the state for food processing facilities. No other county allows non-farmers to build facilities in every residential district. Why should we? Second, why shouldn't our agritourism law be on a par with other Maryland counties? Why not follow best practices? Why not impose conditions and like Howard County, require that structures be subordinate in size and intensity to the farming operation? Next, what is natural resources tourism, which is authorized in the bill? Can we buzz saw forests for ATV trails? How about a shooting range in the Meadow next door? Finally, why should citizens have much confidence in a committee, an advisory committee, that may be stacked by the same people who fought tooth and nail against any proposal that would have protected community interests? At best, another advisory committee kicks the can down the road and at worst, it tells me that my county government listens more to special interests than citizens. According to press reports, this bill is a done deal. Your voting may be done, but we are not done with the work needed to have policies that are right for the farmers who till their land, their neighbors, and the environment.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, let's see. Anybody else want to speak on 6717? Seeing no movement, oh, here we got more? There you go. Come on out, sir. Thanks for coming out. And we'll start off with you, sir. Name and address, please. Two minutes.
Stuart Pittman, 440...
Sir, there you go. Oh, somebody knocked you off again. There you go.
Okay, Stuart Pittman, 440 Doden Road, Davidsonville, Maryland. Operate a farm, 550 acres, mainly horses, grow hay, and my siblings do wine and a vineyard. I'm also the chair of the County Issues Committee of the Farm Bureau and I'm the vice chair of the Soil Conservation District of Anarondale County. And I got involved in this bill when it first came out. We didn't get to see it before it came to you, unfortunately, and it was a very flawed bill and we've had 10 amendments since then. All along, I and others have thought that this bill ought to have a two-tiered system so that small activities like inviting the 4-H Club out do not need any kind of approval, but that high-end stuff does. We met with P&amp;Z and Bernie Marzick and were told just a few weeks ago that we will need a certificate of use to be able to do agritourism from a plan and zoning officer. So that plan and zoning officer will be required to determine whether or not the primary use is farming and the agritourism is a secondary use. Unfortunately, they have not been out on these farms and a lot of farmers really don't want them there, to be honest, but we do have these documents, these farm plans. They're called Soil Conservation and Water Quality Plans. 522 farmers have them. One word, changing the or to and, and you've all gotten the emails about this, so you all know what I'm talking about. Nobody was willing to make the amendment. Nobody was willing to even introduce it so it could be discussed, unfortunately, but that amendment would mean that the plan and zoning officer would have a document, a farm plan to look at, that would show what kind of farming it is so then they can decide if it's an accessory use. There are 522 of them. They're required in order to get preservation programs, any kind of cost-share programs. You require them in this bill, in fact, if you don't have the tax assessment. So requiring them isn't a big deal. I mean, the government does that, this county does that. We think that, all of Farm Bureau thinks that these should be required so that agritourism is about agriculture.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Shea, because I know you, but everybody else might not know you. So name and address and two minutes, please.
Yes, Mike Shea from Red Top Farm. And my wife is here, VK Holtsendorf. We're proud to be part of the new farm-to-table movement where our local farm feeds our community with fresh produce. Our farm has fed, been feeding all of Shady sod in the past. It was established in 1720 and the farmhouse rebuilt in 1870. We're proud to be that next generation that's bringing it full circle. I would like to share one of the great things that has happened in this agritourism bill, supposedly a farm bill that was supposed to help farmers. There's only one great thing that I know that has come out of it and that that's the environmental community and real farmers are walking together for the first time ever. And I can tell you, we're not done. Maybe tonight we can't change one word from or to and to make sure that we're real farmers, that we're helping and not just retail people or people in the event business, because that's what it is. It is special interest over public interest because if we're really trying to help farmers, that's how you tell if it's a farm. If a farm has a soil conservation plan, they're part of the solution, they're not part of the problem. And if you want to identify it, who best to identify it but a farming agency? So it didn't happen tonight here evidently because nobody was brave enough to raise their hand, but because of this new solidarity between the environmental movement and the farming movement that happened because of this bill and Kathy Grant and Growth Action Network met all summer long when you were in recess. They worked hard. They come up with ideas and a lot of promises happened. They promised that there would be upper limits. Well, those promises were hollow.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Sir, your name and address, please, in two minutes.
My name is Brian Riddle. I'm a resident of Davidsonville and owner of Homestead Gardens and I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to reflect over my experience in this journey, getting this bill to where it is today. And I appreciate the quick return of bringing the bill forward because we've been working on this for over a year now and I think that personally, the concerns that have been shared by many through the process of this bill's evolution before this council has demonstrated, I think, the effectiveness of the legislative process. And I also think that the input from those concerned has been very impactful on where the bill is today and I feel that the administration's commitment to bringing this citizens group, And I feel that the administration's commitment to bringing this citizens group, this advisory committee, is representative of the progress we made. And so I heard county administration representation tonight assure you that there will be adequate participation by those in the community that are concerned about the, you know, the slated interests or the farm interests and not the community interests or the citizens' interests. And I'm here to tell you that that's certainly not the case. And I encourage you to move forward with this bill, not because it serves special interest as a retailer or an event business, because this is certainly a farm business. And as a member and an appointed member, district supervisor of the Soil Conservation District, I also recognize the opportunity to work with the farm community. And I certainly encourage the development and use of farm plans. But using this legislation as a way to mandate or require the use of farm plans certainly was not the intent of our work group and my efforts, and it's certainly counter to the intent of the Soil Conservation District, in my opinion. So I appreciate the time you've given. I hope you'll move forward with this bill. We're ready to get it done. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, name and address, two minutes, please.
My name is Anna Chaney. I live in Lothian, Maryland, on Honey's Harvest Farm. My farm is in agricultural preservation with the MOUTH program. It is also, has been in tobacco in its past, and currently is in hay. It also has a soil conservation farm plan on that farm. I'm a board member currently of the Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission, and I did participate as the chairperson of the work group who studied this for the last year and a half. I had lots of input, I think, with not only the group itself, but also with professionals from around the state who currently have agritourism in their jurisdictions. One who is currently the head of Somatic, who is in PG County, our neighboring county. So that was the first definition of agritourism that we worked with in our work group. Theirs is a bit more liberal than the one that has now come to this bill. And I do think that it certainly, I don't think that any bill is perfect. I do think this bill accomplishes everything that we were set out to do, and I do think there will be much participation from all types of farmers, from the conventional hay farmers, as on our farm, to the new and agritourism-related farming that we hope to encourage in our existing and our new farmers. So I do ask that you support Bill 6717 tonight with a vote in favor of it. I feel that it provides definitions of agritourism agriculture. I think it does provide the opportunity for existing and new farmers. It accommodates the governor's recommendation to all counties in the state to define agritourism. And it does provide a lot of guidelines and help for the agencies as well as the farmer. It also gives our Economic Development Corporation an opportunity to finally provide the guidelines and the steps, the processes that farmers need to go through from the federal licensing requirements.
Ms. Chaney.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, folks, for coming down. Anybody else want to come in and chime in on 6717? Oh, here we go. How are you doing tonight? Name and address, even though I know who you are.
I'm Plankston, and I'm the executive director of Growth Action Network. I just wanted to say that keeping farmers farming and keeping forests thriving is one of our planks of Growth Action Network. So that we haven't had a lot of contact with farmers, unfortunately, until this bill came up. And we did work all summer. I hear you guys are tired of this bill. You guys had a break. We were still working with the farmers, with the Farm Bureau, and a lot of folks. There's some really big problems in this bill. The value-added processing is very complex, and we're doing it with one ingredient. There's no limit on how big or how much land can be taken by accessory agritourism. And then you're just creating a real big universe of non-farmers who can qualify for whatever this new agritourism that Anna Chaney talked about. We're talking about the farmers that are here now. The Farm Bureau voted for this amendment. What's the bill for? If the farmers want this amendment and the farmer, and the bill is to help farmers, and you guys are quiet and nobody's going to do anything, it's really disappointing. And I just have to say that I think you've heard from, you know, Kathy Gramp, a lot of these folks have spent a lot of time learning about this. We heard that it was a burden to have a farm plan. They're free. You can get them. They give you lots of help. And we have USDA, I mean, sorry, Soil Conservation Districts all over this state, and we will have one of the worst agritourism bills. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 6717. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6717.
Bill number 6717, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning and Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement: Construction Code Administrative Provisions, Agritourism, Permits Agricultural Buildings.
Right, any discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Trumbauer.
Could we invite Mr. Marzick up to just give him a chance to respond to some of the testimony, if he's so inclined? And thank you for doing it with a smile on your face, Brian.
You're welcome. Is there a specific?
Well, so we, and.
A lot of testimony.
So Mr. Marzick and I.
We'd like the supporting testimony of the.
Mr. Marzick and I have had several conversations leading up to this about some of the emails and contacts that we've been getting about the issues. And so you've justified the administration's position to me privately, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to do that publicly, especially, I mean, we heard, you know, change one word or close this exemption or something. So I know you guys have been following this. I didn't want those concerns to go unanswered.
Sure. The big issue that you've heard about and we've heard about is changing the word "or" to "and," to require a farm plan for agritourism. We have been researching since this suggestion came up. We haven't been able to find one jurisdiction in the state that requires these farm plans are now voluntary. We think they should be voluntary, and this would be a step that would increase the burden, presumably, on these operations that are trying to come into the county when we're trying to increase the opportunity for them to come into the county. That was the whole purpose of this legislation. The whole purpose of pushing it forward was to try to encourage agritourism in the county and look at new ways to encourage that business to come into the county. So we felt as if that amendment would actually go in the opposite direction, requiring a plan that is not currently required on these operations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 6717.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Pruka.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 6717 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6817.
Bill number 6817, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Admissions and Amusement Tax, Agritourism.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I neglected to thank the cosponsors, Mr. Trumbauer, Mr. Pruka, Mr. Walker, and the last bill, so I'll do that now. I also want to thank Mr. Walker and Mr. Pruka for cosponsoring Bill 6817. This is a bill that actually passed at the, back in July in the county council meeting. This bill eliminates the admissions and amusement tax for agritourism operations in the county. These tax rates are set by local officials, and the tax is calculated as a percentage of the admissions and amusement receipts. State comptroller collects the admissions and amusement tax for the county, and this has resulted in an estimated $15,000 in revenue to the county. Again, this is intended to encourage operations of corn mazes, pumpkin patches, other agritourism activities that we've discussed. We would ask you to support this bill.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marzick, you alluded to the part that mystifies me about this in your testimony. We already passed this bill. I voted against it because we voted against the other bill. Why do we have to pass it again?
Because the bill was contingent on the agritourism bill passing. So the agritourism bill just passed, and now this bill can pass. So when it passed last time, it became null and void because the agritourism bill failed.
But the bill failed before we passed that one. And I mean, that's really a question to my colleagues why they voted for it, which they refuse to answer. I think I'm the only one not in on the joke. But anyway, thank you for, thank you for explaining that.
There we go. Anybody else? All right, we're going to have a public hearing on 6817. Anybody want to chime in? Come on down. Okay, see no movement in the crowd? We're going to close public hearing on 6817. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6817.
Bill number 6817, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Admissions and Amusement Tax, Agritourism.
Any discussion? See no movement? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 6817.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Pruka.
Aye.
And Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill 6817 is passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6917.
Bill number 6917, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Position Control in the Classified Service and Exempt Service.
Right. Administration.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. With me at the table, Jackie Atkinson from Personnel, Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law, and Jessica Lays from the Budget Office. Bill 6917 eliminates one classified program specialist, two in the police department, and creates one exempt executive management assistant, two in the office of the county executive. This position will be used for minority outreach officer. This position will help with public safety recruitment and increasing diversity in our public safety departments, as well as expanding the role of the Human Resources Core Group and also acting, being involved with community outreach in the African-American community. This position will work closely with the Human Relations Compliance Officer and the Multicultural Affairs Officer that are currently housed in the county executive's office. We will be offering amendment at the appropriate time, but we'd happy to answer any questions the council has.
Anybody on the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Marzick, so who are these responsibilities currently being done by?
This is a position that's by Derek Matthews, who is in a contract position right now, and his duties have expanded, and he's been very successful in his role in looking to increase his role within the county.
Check. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, with that being said, let's move it on to the public hearing. We're going to open up the public hearing on 6917, if anybody wants to chime in. Okay, see no movement in the crowd? We're going to close the public hearing on 6917. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6917.
Bill number 6917, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Position Control in the Classified Service and Exempt Service.
All right, discussion? Seeing none. Okay, we have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment clarifies that the executive management assistant two position created in the exempt service pursuant to Section 62103A of the county code will be in the office of the county executive.
Now about that, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is just to clarify where the position is going to be located. This was actually pointed out by the auditor's office that it was not included in the bill.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Pruka.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
All right, and as far as Bill 6917 as amended, will be heard on September 8, 2017.
For the record, for 6917, I'll co-sponsor that one.
And you can throw me on there, too. This way you got a full house. All right, so 6917 amendment will be heard on September 18, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7417.
Bill number 7417, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Capital Budget and Program and Capital Projects Bond Ordinance: New Police CID Facility, Amending Scope and Description of Project.
All right. Boy, we got a full house on this deal, don't we?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. With me at the table, John Hammond from the Budget Office, Deputy Chief Bill Cramp from the Police Department, Nancy Duden from the Office of Law, Chris Fitz from Department of Public Works, and Nancy Noonan from Central Services, and I believe the police chief is directly behind me. First, I want to thank council and council staff for convening a session in August to introduce this important legislation. We appreciate your efforts to pull that together so quickly to get this bill heard tonight. Bill 7417 amends the scope and description of the new police criminal investigation division's facility, Capital Project. This bill will propose a new location within a half mile of the original proposed location, and a new location is less costly to acquire and less costly to outfit. The bill would also remove reference for the space in the crime lab and evidence collection as the overall space of the facility is less than originally proposed. The needs of the criminal investigation division will be met by this new facility. Our panel will be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink. I don't know if this has any bearing or not, but the realtor for the property owner is also a realtor that I use for a lot of the business work, so I just want to put that on the record. I'm currently in negotiations with him right now, so. Okay. Anything else?
All right, looks like everybody's happy. We must have been happy for us to come down there and have a meeting for you, is right? Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing on 7417. Anybody want to come in and chime in? See no movement in the crowd? We're going to close the public hearing on 7417. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7417.
Bill number 7417, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Capital Budget and Program and Capital Projects Bond Ordinance: New Police CID Facility, Amending Scope and Description of Project.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 7417.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Pruka.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 7417 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3117.
Resolution number 3117, Resolution Urging the Federal Aviation Administration to Modify Flight Paths and Elevations Imposed by Next-Gen Air Transportation System to Pre-Next-Gen Paths and to Place Warnings in the Automated Terminal Information System to Ensure Pilots Comply with Required Altitude During Their Approach to Baltimore-Washington Marshall International Airport.
All right, I want to say, I want to put my name on as a cosponsor. Somehow I got left off, so the entire council's doing it now. Mr. Marzick?
Oh, it's mine. May I, please?
Oh, sorry about that. That's right, you was leading the charge. Sorry about that, Ms. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not much more to add except to thank everyone for jumping aboard and having this be sponsored by the whole council. It's a great, it's a great resolution. It's an important resolution. We'll be making some modest changes later. I'll have an amendment to offer at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Mr. Marzick?
We support the resolution and the amendments when they'll be offered.
Okay. All right, we're going to open up the public hearing on 3117. It's being continued tonight. If you spoke on the July 17 meeting, you're not to speak tonight. We have a couple of people that showed up today, and we have Ms. Mary Reese. If you're here, come on down.
Did she speak at the Austin?
Okay, Danette. Thank you for coming out again, though. We appreciate your interest. Okay, Mr. Ivan? Is I'm saying it right? Even?
Evan.
Did you already speak, too?
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming out again, too, tonight. We appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak on 3117? See no movement in the crowd? We're going to close the public hearing on Resolution number 3117. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 3117.
Resolution number 3117, Resolution Urging the Federal Aviation Administration to Modify Flight Paths and Elevations Imposed by Next-Gen Air Transportation System to Pre-Next-Gen Paths and to Place Warnings in the Automated Terminal Information System to Ensure Pilots Comply with Required Altitude During Their Approach to Baltimore-Washington Marshall International Airport.
All right, any discussion?
I have an amendment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes language related to the Automated Terminal Information System and adds language regarding the reports and recommendations of the DC Metroplex BWI Community Roundtable.
Move to adopt.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Trumbauer, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those of you who know me know that I have a preference for short amendments, and this one is a long amendment, so I apologize. But it's a great amendment, because despite the allegations earlier that none of us did anything last month, I was actually working quite hard on getting this right. And I'd like to thank the constituents who helped me, who are here tonight, as well as the administration, especially Ramon from the, I don't know what his official position is, the head transportation guy. We all love Ramon. But what we did is, if you'll recall, the last meeting, we had some testimony about some changes. So those are incorporated in here. We're making it a little bit less prescriptive and swapping out some language.